Okay, good afternoon. Hatfield, welcome to the February 20th, 2024, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We are meeting a little earlier tonight to accommodate a work event that I have this evening, so I appreciate the flexibility of my colleagues. As usual, I will open the meeting and read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings, the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. I don't think I have any announcements.
No announcements.
You said no announcements. You said, "Marlene, anything?"
No, thank you.
Can't think of anything. So then we'll go ahead. Is anyone here for public forum? Carrie, come on up. Don't be sorry.
I was asked to do this, so I wanted to make sure I did. For those who don't know me, I'm Carrie Flaherty, Lieutenant Flaherty for the Fire Department, and I was asked by one of our Perdian members to read a letter that he's submitting to you all as the board and to the town administrator, but he could not be here today because of his full-time for Charlton Fire Department. So he had written it and actually pulled me aside and asked if I would read it publicly and then submit the letters and signatures to you of this letter. So I'll make this as quick as possible in my three minutes. I hope this letter finds you all well. My name is Jeffrey Hamburg, and I am taking this time to share some information with you regarding the Hatfield Fire Department. The fire service in this country is built on tradition and cultures like integrity, honor, and trust dating back to our founding fathers of this country. For example, Benjamin Franklin was a member of the first paid fire department in the country. I mention this historic fact because the culture that carries on today in modern firehouses plays a big role in the department that a firefighter chooses to serve at. Myself and many other Perdian members of the Hatfield Fire Department travel nearly an hour to serve the citizens of Hatfield during our respective shifts because of the culture that Chief Flaherty has cultivated and continues to support here. Most of the Perdian members work full-time as firefighters and EMT paramedics for large municipalities around the New England area. We could all work part-time jobs that are closer to our homes with better pay. However, the great morale and the positive culture here at Hatfield Fire Department makes it a desirable place to serve in this capacity. We all feel very supported and empowered by Chief Flaherty, who continues to advocate for his members and supports them along their careers in the fire service. He constantly makes sure we have the tools and equipments required to do our jobs to the best of our abilities within his power. He is always open to hearing new ideas or other perspectives on topics that arise and is not afraid to use other people's good ideas to accomplish goals and improve our service to the community here. These leadership qualities are desirable and hard to find these days. This type of behavior that he displays benefits the town greatly by attracting seasoned, experienced firefighters and EMS providers with elevated levels of certification and qualifications to be on shift here, just to work under the direction of Chief Flaherty in an environment like he has created here despite the low salary and less-than-ideal schedules compared to other departments. Fire departments across the nation are facing the same issues of recruitment and retention of members that Hatfield is facing today, wondering what they can do to entice potential employees to choose their department and stay long enough to get a return on the very expensive investment of hiring new members. In my opinion, there are four major topics that firefighters consider when it comes to choosing a place to work: salary, scheduled 24-hour shifts are ideally, benefits, and culture. Even larger departments who have more desirable schedules, better benefits, and higher salaries still struggle to hire and retain employees because of how competitive the fire service has become and how poor the culture can be even in affluent departments. Employees want to work where they feel supported and empowered with a good shift schedule and fair wages. I speak for myself and many other Perdian members of the department when I say that Chief Flaherty is a leading reason that we came here and to continue serve here under his leadership. Most of the Perdian firefighter/paramedics work 24-hour rotating shifts at their primary firehouses and would prefer to work 24-hour shifts here in Hatfield as this would align better with rotating schedules and allow us to cover more hours with ALS ambulance staffing while also improving our on-duty fire coverage. This change to the staffing configuration shortens response times, ultimately reducing loss of life and property. These increases to staffing would also help raise the town's ISO ratings, which then reduces property insurance costs to residents and improve the quality of emergency services that the residents of Hatfield would receive and certainly deserve. These lower insurance costs and higher ISO ratings also track larger commercial industries as well, which helps offset the tax burden for the homeowners in Hatfield. We currently have nearly enough Perdian paramedics to be able to provide 24/7 ALS coverage without having to pull Chief Flaherty off his normal daily duties as the chief officer of the department if the town would fund the additional wages needed to support this change in the staffing configuration. I also believe that offering 24-hour shifts would increase the desirability to work here for those who have not applied just yet in the past due to undesirable current schedules. Chief Flaherty is the only fire chief in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that operates on the primary ambulance for his department as the sole paramedic five days a week, eight hours a day. As if that wasn't enough, he also signs up for overnight ambulance coverage shifts several times a week outside his work schedule to ensure that the residents of Hatfield receive a paramedic-level ambulance as often as they possibly can. He does all of this while also balancing the roles of fire chief, fire prevention officer, community risk reduction, public safe educator, fire and EMS training coordinator, emergency manager-director, and the countless other tasks with no administrative help or assistance. Chief Flaherty is widely respected in the fire service across the Commonwealth and beyond, serving on the board for Western Mass Fire Chiefs Association and teaching at the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. I truly hope the town of Hatfield understands how fortunate they are to have such a great leader steering the reins of their fire department in this town, which has attracted highly-desirable, educated, and seasoned firefighters and EMS personnel to choose Hatfield as the community to serve in. Chief Flaherty's vision for the growth of this department is solely to better protect the citizens of this great town, and I hope this town will continue to support his exceptional leadership and direction of this department. I thank you for the opportunity to submit this letter, and I hope you feel proud to have a leader like Chief Flaherty protecting your community day after day. Respectfully, Jeffrey Hamburg, firefighter/paramedic for Hatfield, but also Charlton Fire Department.
Thank you. That's a very thoughtful letter.
So I have copy for all of you, too, that I'll just...
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's got to make you feel good, Bob. It's got to make you feel good. That's a nice letter. Okay, anyone else for public forum? Let's quickly take up the consent agenda items before we get into... We do have Representative Sabodosa here, and I want to be very respectful of her schedule and time, but I think we could get these done fairly quickly. So first would be the minutes, accepting the minutes of December 5th, January 2nd, January 16th, executive session, February 6th, and February 6th.
Well, are we ready to do executive sessions or still in discussion on executive sessions?
That's fine. Oh, I didn't mean to read the January, that date. Sorry, just the regular session.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for January 2nd, 2024, and December 5th, 2023.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Karen. And then January 16th was executive session, but February 6th, did you include that in the motion?
No, I didn't.
February 6th is an executive session as well. Yes. Okay. So we will hold on those as those matters are still pending. So then we have the presidential primary. So this is just to accept the warrant, correct, for the presidential primary?
That's all it is.
Yeah. Carrie, to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the presidential primary.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then last item is the liquor license for Posada doing business as Cantina. This is just signing. We already approved it, right?
You approved their application.
So did this actually come through from...
Yes, it did. Finally. It took a very long time.
So once this is signed, they can begin serving?
Absolutely.
I'm so glad that was...
It allows them to contact the wholesaler because they're going to have to produce the copy of this license to a wholesaler.
So we don't need to vote it. We're just signing it, right?
We are voting.
We are voting.
Because you voted to accept the application that they submitted.
Okay. So I'll take a motion to sign this license.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we sign the license for...
Cantina.
The Cantina. Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's great. I'm really glad that that has finally...
Oh, I was so pleased to hear this last week.
I know. I was in there last weekend and was thinking. I feel bad for them, all the delays. Okay. Okay. We got through all the consent agenda items, so we are ready to move to our first posted business item tonight, and we're joined by Rep. Sabodosa. Lindsay, thanks for coming. Come on up to the microphone.
Well, thank you so much for putting me on the agenda. It's nice to see everybody, and I wanted to come because I wanted to, first of all, thank you for the letter that you sent me regarding the golf court issue. I am, of course, here to talk about golf courts. This is golf carts this evening, not golf courses. So I'll be really brief. We have brought the issue to House Counsel, and what they are asking for is a home rule petition from the town of Hatfield. So with the information that you've provided, we have a general idea of how you'd like to proceed. If you want to just send us a home rule petition with a general idea, that's fine. We can work from there, but we do need a vote from the community, so I'm sorry to come back and ask you to do more work, but that's what I'm coming to ask you to do. If you have very specific language, we're also, you know, very happy to work with that as well, but I am going to need that in order to proceed.
And so that would be a town meeting, though?
It would be a town meeting.
So that's... I mean, the timing is perfect.
That's why I wanted to come in.
Because we're putting together, you know, the warrant and all of that. So I would suggest that in terms of specific language, Marlene, maybe you and Chief Dukoschak?
Yes. And actually, I had anticipated an article anyway because we wanted to make a bylaw as well.
Right. Right.
And in-house counsel did suggest, and this, of course, is totally up to the town, but if you want to have your town council take a peek at it before you send it over only because of liability issues, he warned me, "Don't tell them what to say because that would be a problem for me."
Right.
So if it works for town meeting, we're happy to file it as soon as we get that vote, and we'll try to move it through as quickly as we can. They do have a two-year limit, so, you know, if we can't get it through by the end of this session, which is coming up, we'll be able to go back next year, and we might just need a letter from you asking us to extend if we run into delays.
Okay.
As often happens.
I mean, it's a pretty tight timeframe after town meeting to try to run it through before the session ends, but...
Indeed, but we can, you know, we can start the process. You know, we'll certainly do all of the meetings.
So it would still be active to use in the next session?
Exactly. Exactly. So it's not really, it's not a waste of time to do it now, and we can always, with a letter from the Select Board, keep it alive if necessary.
Okay. Maybe it could even get...
It might be fast. Who knows?
You never know.
You never know.
Okay.
That is good news.
What's not bad news?
Yeah, I think it's good news, and I think it'll be interesting to see because I think other communities may, I don't know, maybe we're a little bit unique in...
Be the first in the state. So there's that.
Right.
So, but, you know, it's good to be first and figure out how this would all work, and I'm sure there are other communities interested.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate you being on top of the tying of it and all of that and running it by House Counsel, and, well, it shouldn't take long, right, to get or something?
No.
Okay. And then we'll get it on the warrant, everything we need to get on the warrant, which is May 14.
May 14.
Right.
That means May 14.
Yes. And then we could let you know right afterwards what happens.
Wonderful.
So, excellent.
That's all I have for you.
That's it.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to, we're going to move right along because I'm trying to squeeze in as much as I can. I have to leave tonight. So Chief Flaherty is here to discuss himself and... What is Luke's rank?
He's a captain.
Captain Longstreet, attending a conference in Arizona. So I'll let you describe what the conference is about.
So I submitted my letter two weeks ago to Marlene about travel due to our HR policies, and it's to go to the Station Design Conference. There's been a little bit more of an uptick. I know that the Comprehensive Plan and several other projects and grants that we've gotten in the last couple of years have discussed about moving some of our critical services out of the floodplain. It sounds like it's gotten a little bit more headway within the Comprehensive Plan, and it's also on our, the Fire Department's 10-year capital plan is to potentially get a public safety building or a mixed-use building, honestly. So this would be just the ability to go out and kind of see what the process is. I don't think anybody here has ever been really part of the whole process of a public safety building or mixed-use building like this could be. It's go out, talk to architects, get some ideas, see what's out there, see some general cost ideas, and it's really the idea is that first step to move forward. We know that these are multi-year process if they were to be, to move forward, and at this point, to best of my knowledge, we've never really done anything to look at what the steps are, look at potential costs or anything, and everything is kind of very speculative at this point. So it'd be the opportunity to go out and meet with some of these folks out at this conference. They run it every year, and the reason why it would be myself and Captain Longstreet, he's our training officer. So a lot of these buildings, you can build some of the training props into the building as you're doing it, and obviously, you guys know Luke, he's very well-versed in construction, a lot of other aspects, too, so he would be a good pick to go. If he can't, you'd have to find another alternate to go to it. Costs would be funded through our normal department travel and meals expense. We have a professional development line that's for conferences. We rarely ever spend money out of it because we don't typically travel very often, so that was the request.
So it's within your, the spending is within your budget?
Yeah, it's all within the budget that's already there.
I mean, to be honest, it's really a shame that, and this is water under the bridge, that we didn't, because we have just copped together, right? All of our police, our fire, our ambulance have just been, but we didn't pursue this when all the Homeland Security money was flying around, you know, after September 11th. But water under the bridge would have, could have, should have, but...
Part of the reason, too, is why I'm moving a little bit quicker than we have in the past is that I think folks are aware, there was some legislation coming at the state level and the federal level for, you know, they have the school building committees out there. There's actually one trying to move forward for public safety buildings, but the projects have to be essentially shovel-ready to move forward. There was rumor at the federal level, like there's the AFG and the SAFER grant, that they may actually start one for public safety complexes. Obviously, it could still be a little bit down the road, but we're also a little bit down the road to really move forward. So there's, there is potential in the next couple of years that there might actually be some federal and/or state money becoming available, so it'd be nice to try to have at least a little bit of the process started, should that actually take place.
Well, because typically, the further you are in the planning process, the more favorable your application is looked at, and then there's other things happening, too. There's changes at the DPW, maybe there's, I don't know, there's a lot to consider, maybe space up there. I have no idea.
But getting some groundwork done and seeing what options are available, and that's kind of what this is. It's multiple days, multiple sessions of coming up with ideas and the planning process, how you go about, you know, hiring architects and all of it, from beginning to end, the planning all the way through construction phases. You get to learn little bits and pieces out of it for a couple of days.
I know that with those larger grants, these pre-conferences can be very helpful because they are big projects. I don't personally have a problem with it, but I don't know what...
I guess I'm just, in my head, trying to say, sending you out to Arizona for a pre-conference of fire stations when it's still a few years away, is that a good message to the taxpayers or a bad message to the taxpayers? Are we even at the point where we're ready for even discussion on a fire station when we might be discussing down the road a multipurpose building, which would be putting our services together or not? I mean, we're not even at the point where we're ready to negotiate on or even discuss stuff like that. So I'm not, I guess I'm not convinced in my head. I'm trying to get convinced of if you go now and then four or five years down the road, then we start and you get a bigger offer job someplace. Now, I mean, we lose that information, but, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how to say to the taxpayers, "This is a good thing or a bad thing," in my head, that's all. What are your thoughts, Greg?
I think I totally respect the chief's planning because he's the chief. He knows what's good. I respect that. At the same time, it's, I don't know if that's the first step in doing all this stuff. I really don't know if that is the first step for us to do. I'm hoping you do, and I understand what you're saying. You get that stuff down so that we can do something, but I don't even know what the first step is in planning this.
One of the big things with the conference is, truthfully, the planning stage, is how do you go about starting the process? I think two whole days, almost, of the three is that first part, and then there's vendors and other things that are out there. You get to have a little bit of the fun stuff of looking at potential projects, but most of it's really the planning on how you go about, you know, addressing the taxpayers and presenting a plan. My take, and I had this conversation with Diana a few months ago, is I think a mixed-use actually works. I think fire, police, council on aging would actually be really beneficial. I'm actually in favor of that type of a building, and I know that's, you know, been a big talk of where do we need for, you know, for more than just one particular department, and that's kind of what I'm looking to see what's out there, honestly.
But this conference isn't for a multi-building. It's basically just for fire station design, right?
They're everything. Because some of the awards that come out every year, they actually have multi-use buildings. It's, you know, town offices and emergency services. There's central services with emergency services.
I mean, I think that there's a lot of merits to looking at multi-use buildings, like you're saying, particularly, we know we need to do something with our space for our seniors, but it's, and at the same time, it would also serve probably as a shelter.
Correct.
You know, during any kind of emergency or anything like that, because as we know, the shelter right now is in the heart of where you're most likely to have an emergency, which our most common emergency here would be flooding.
We actually, town of Hatfield doesn't have a shelter. We can't use any of our buildings for shelters. Our fire station is the EOC, Emergency Operations Center.
So you can't have that as...
But we're not qualified as a...
I see both of your points, like where do you start? But, I mean, this is an opportunity to start somewhere.
I'm okay with the part you're saying, but like Luke going down to learn how to design this stuff, I guess that seems like it's very, very advanced in the stages of doing this.
Yeah, it was just having two people go, so there's more information. As it looks right now, I'm not sure he'll actually get the time off from work.
Yeah.
I talked to him again after I...
I mean, maybe a compromise is just to have the chief go? Is that what you're saying, to try to mitigate the expense?
Yeah, and my other concern is you're going to have enough money for, you know, back in June, you were asking for $10,000 or because of sending somebody to go to the academy in February, I think.
Right.
Are you still going to have that?
Right. Where the money is actually going is, one's on salary, one's on the expense side.
Okay, but you'll still have the money to go to that training that you were asking about before?
Yes.
You don't expect to be asking for, to have any overages on the spending side?
I don't expect overages on either side as of right now.
I mean, I...
The only match over is ALS intercepts, but that's...
You know, I think the whole, you know, we, look, we talk and we talk about all the different things that are up in the air about the department, and a lot of things are up in the air, but you don't start somewhere, at least to be able to say to townspeople, you know, that we went and started exploring this option, but maybe it is just one member of the department that goes.
It is kind of looking like it would probably be only one.
Only one, anyway.
Scheduling's not really working out with the others. We tried, but it's not working out.
They don't have any classes like that around here that would be more directed towards Massachusetts?
Well, that's, that was going to be, that was one of my concerns, that, you know, I assume state by state, there's a lot of variations in, you know, sort of the procedures. So is this designed to be like a national conference on this?
Actually, a couple of the architects are, I think, one is from Mass and one is from Connecticut that are vendors or exhibitors out there. They're actually, they've done a lot in this area.
I know, like FEMA has put out information and booklets and actually books on building public safety buildings.
Is there a component to this? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, that is how, I went to something like this many, many years ago when I worked for Hampshire County, and it was actually about regional ambulance services and trying to build those, and it was about a big grant program that would allow you to do that? And so is there a component to this that is at all instructional about the grant opportunities that are out there, even at the federal level?
Not for this, no.
That would make that a great conference. Yeah.
Unfortunately, we're in that boat where some of the other grants, you know, Hatfield doesn't qualify for some of them because our median income is just high enough that we don't, we don't qualify for some of them, but this one, I don't have anything. A lot of the FEMA ones, I've seen some of the information from FEMA is, you know, how you make sure that it's built to withstand certain...
Marlene, is there anything we're missing about out-of-state travel that would have to be taken into consideration for this request? I know that we have a policy, right?
We do, and, yeah, authorization is required by the Select Board.
Just the authorization. There's nothing else.
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
So there would be, so all the expenses would be covered out of your operating budget?
The flight, the hotel, and the conference are all out of budget. I was, I mean, there's food included. If I need to buy one meal, I can pay for my own meal. It's not a big deal, but there is money there for all of it if it needed to be.
And you don't expect to have any shortages in the budget at the end of the year?
That was my only concern.
That would then be, I think that would be a tough one at the end of the year to then...
I won't even draw down those two particular lines because it's, in our budget, it's built into two separate lines technically for attending the conference, and then the actual travel, it's two separate, and it won't even diminish them all the way down. There's still be money left in both lines.
I mean, basically, you're asking to spend something within your budget and to, you know, try to be proactive about, you know, something looming large on our horizon. I mean, there's a lot of things looming large on our horizon outside of your budget as well, but I don't know, how often does the conference happen?
Typically, once a year.
Is it always held in Arizona?
I think the last two years have been in Arizona. I think it was in Indianapolis the year, three years ago. So it moves around. It's sponsored by Firehouse Magazine, so depends on where they can find a place.
I'm, you know, I'm okay with it.
Well, if we can get something back on the multipurpose buildings, that's the key, but still, we're not even close for a couple of years, and if you can put a package together of the information for the future, I guess, but then that might all change on code changes in four or five years.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about a long process here for getting any, even just public land acquisition because we have no idea where we might cite something like this.
And that's actually, I think, one of the, is, you know, acquiring land.
Site selection and...
There's a whole 45-minute session on some of these things, so it's, you know, we don't know what we don't know right now, so to Ed's point, you know, we could be several years away. It could be nothing, but we're never going to know until we actually get some data on it to know that this is either a $6 million building or this is a $16 million building. That's a huge difference potentially moving forward if we need to, but we really have[1711.01] But we we really have no information at this point at all. Everything is what people perceive it to be.
Chief, I'm just thinking, you know, the past few years, we've talked about, you know, a new facility, but is it on the capital plan?
I have it in FY twenty seven.
Okay, I thought there was.
Yeah, which. Not happening, but.
Place holders.
We, you know, it's good to keep it on the plan. Yes.
We took it off for four or five years and. You know, it is something that's reality. Both of us have outgrown our space down out back. They're about grown their space downstairs, so it's. It's kind of trending that.
You know, the the space issues here. Talked about this on and on. Last time I was on the port, you know, we talk about the museum and the historical artifacts and all these, you know, all these other things. So there's a lot of space needs.
Police Department. Police Department. Very tight over there. And I don't think when.
And then the council on aging is.
Was constructed, it didn't have in mind, you know, expanding, obviously.
It did from the two departments that were gonna occupy the space, but other individuals said, you don't need any of that. We were essentially told, no, don't plan for the future. And here we are. Eleven years eleven years later, and we're out of space. Or running out of space.
I think it's been pretty tight quarters over there for a very.
It has regardless, but it's worked, but it's it's becoming more troublesome.
I think this would be a tough sell if he was coming and asking for additional money outside the budget.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So I don't know. Do we need to vote, Marlene?
Yes, does need an authorization.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize. Let me see, the chief to go on. The firehouse to the firehouse conference in Arizona. Their chief.
I will second that, but I I do want people to understand this is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow or next year.
Right.
We're talking long term. We're talking long term. We're not talking right away, so. I mean.
I think that's a good point because I'm sure I'll probably get some phone calls.
And you know, if you send somebody down to a conference for a pre-design, people are gonna think, well, that means the town wants to build a station and. And you're gonna hear more screaming yelling after this past tax increase. So I just want people to be aware it's it's long term. And also, the money is coming within your budget. You're not asking for anymore.
And then what what arrangements will be made for coverage chief wise while you're gone? That would just be Alan.
Alan and Ray will both, we have talked about it, so they would be aware that I'm out of town, and then I will have. I'll do my best to make sure that we have those couple of days of paramedic coverage while I'm out.
Okay, so a motion made and second any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I do appreciate the proactive, you know, nature of it. You know, I don't think it's necessarily premature because I think that these. If we start talking about it, we don't even know where to where to begin, so it'd be nice to have some information.
Hopefully, what we're gonna learn.
Yeah, I'd love a report afterwards, too. I'm sure you'd do that anyway without us asking. Okay, did we take an actual vote?
You did.
Okay. I didn't remember.
Did I think they did? Yeah.
Okay. We're so efficient. Phil, come on up. Mr. Prickett, welcome.
How's it going?
Good. You want to both come up and. David, nice to see you.
Nice to see you all. Thanks for having me. Marlene, did you get a copy of this handout a little while ago?
We did.
Does everybody have that?
This. Yes.
All right. Leave with a little leaflet. You want to start or?
So we're here to give an update on the wastewater treatment plant project. We have DPC Dave Prickett here to go over a few things. He has. Provided a summary to the board, so we can kick it off, Dave.
Yeah, figured we'd just kind of give you a high level update with what things are looking like in the coming months and how things are shaping up. So. Project's actively out to bid. Um, we'll open up as a first step. We had a a pre-bid meeting uh last week. We had really good attendance there, both from filed sub bidders and from G C's. We have filed sub bids opening up on March sixth, so we'll likely be getting our first addendum out next week, this week, next week. Got a lot of good questions from from vendors and contractors. General bids are scheduled to open up March twentieth, two weeks after that. We try to give them a little bit of time in between to process everything. So we're we're right on track for um. Being back with the group either directly or Phil and Marlene will certainly come back to you after we provide a, you know, a recommendation to award with with whomever is the. Lowest responsible eligible bidder, as they say. And then following that, we have all the typical bonds and insurance contracts and then about a two-year, a little less, year and a half to two-year construction period. So we'll be we'll be stressing out Ken for the next two years. I think he can handle it. We've got the the project that remains on budget as appropriated by the the residents a couple of years back, the $12 million project. I can already tell you've had similar conversations just in the last session with costs and the sensitivity and the. Understandably so, you know, lack of patience by residents and ratepayers, myself included in my own town. But. There's obviously some nervous, anxious time prior to getting the bids. We put this budget together. I look back. Early 2020, right before we went into the panic zone of of COVID and such. At the time, we could bank on a three to 5% annual inflation cost for construction year over year. And some small things would change here and there with metals, et cetera, but it was always good. Just understand that obviously in the last. Three years, we've been seeing annual construction increases of at least 10% per year. Um, I think we had one year where it was pushing 20. So things remain relatively volatile in that market. I think things have stabilized with residential construction. With pipeline and pavement, but anything that involves electrical equipment, mechanical equipment is still tipsy. Lead times for electrical equipment right now are about 80 weeks. I've never seen anything like this in my career. So. How have we kind of planned for this as best we can? Well, again, three years ago, we would have never had a base bid and alternates, but we've now structured this with not only a base bid. Um, but five alternates. And the reason we did that is I don't want to come back to you and say we have to rebid a project because the total project was over the allocation for construction.
I think.
Learned that lesson the hard way two years ago up in Orange. And ever since, we we try to do this. So. We have a base bid for the critical infrastructure, electrical headworks, et cetera. Um, but then we prioritize things with with Ken and Phil and Eric in terms of, okay, after that, I need this the most, then I need this the most, and. We are required to award the project in that order. Um, the hope is that we at least get the base bid and alternate one. Those are the the two elements that are uh most near and dear to the heart of the operators. So up until the time when we open bids, sorry.
And I just, so eliminating any part, any alternates, like alternates three through four does not affect our USDA qualifications?
No, USDA has approved the the plans and specs prior to going out. They understand this. It's a. It's a strategy that we work with them on other projects successfully. Sometimes you award a project and halfway through, you work hard to get credits, just like the contractor would come back with extras for change orders. Um, up in Deerfield, we were able to get a good portion of the things that weren't originally awarded back into the project. I think beyond that, it's hard to sit here today and tell you exactly what's gonna happen, but.
Well, that's always the fear. I mean, by the time you go to get the bids, it's been three years and it's been price increases or. Are you gonna miss out anything? It's gonna cost more.
Right.
What's gonna happen here? I mean, that's that's always the worry.
Yeah, and the dollar just doesn't go as far as it did.
Well, and and we're in the the last three years have been completely, you know.
Uncharted.
Yeah, especially in terms of, as you mentioned, some of these components and.
Right.
The availability of.
Things that we can't control. But we're gonna hope for the best, be as responsive on the Q and A and the addenda, keep everybody at the table and interested. Relative to general contractors, too, the the folks that build water wastewater treatment plants are pretty busy right now and pretty selective and. Five years ago, we might get five or six bids for a project like this. We might only get two for something like this. So that also plays into it. Who's hungry on the day of the bid opening and? How bad do they want the project?
I like the way that you that you did that, though, breaking it out so that we, because. Very smart. We have had some cost overruns on other projects that have been.
I've been at the meetings where we've asked the residents for the money and. You never want to have to go back to the have a second bite at the apple, so let's.
So that's great. So you'll keep us posted?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, March sixth is right around the corner.
Right around the corner. The town and the town offices and staff have been great at getting USDA everything they need, so thanks to Marlene and the chief.
David, I was gonna say thank you. So my experience working with USDA, I mean, it's been a very good experience, but it's been very clear to me that. DPC is familiar with working with USDA and you've anticipated everything that they have asked.
It's a predictable list, albeit a long list of things that they want.
But documents and documents and documents, unbelievable.
They're a bank essentially, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On one positive side, I understand there was like three contractors and six or eight subcontractors that came to the the pre-bid.
Yeah, I wasn't personally at the pre-bid, but at least three G C's and I would have said six to eight filed sub bidders. Of which you really want to see the electrical, that's the big one. There's all, I think there's four or five different sub bids, but electrical and G C's are the two the two big ones. Now, the turnout was good and it wasn't mandatory. We do that on purpose. In case somebody has a schedule conflict.
That means that means there's a little competition, so that helps.
I hope so, yeah. We have to do it, too, so they might as well.
Tomorrow, someone else is coming.
Oh, good. Okay.
Oh, so you also have an opportunity for people who weren't at the bid.
We try to accommodate those requests and Ken Ken's great. I mean, the guys are guys are very flexible down there.
I'd just like to add that while we work with the USDA office in Amherst, everything has to go through DC office, pretty much.
Yeah, given the size of the project, yeah.
The process of, I guess, reviewing all our documents.
Yep.
It does, you know, they are reviewed in Amherst as well, but.
There's a local layer and then there's a federal layer on top of it.
Yeah, so it can take take a while.
Yeah, I think we're we're on track and, you know, your next big decision is about the cash flow that's coming your way and how to handle the short-term interest, et cetera, so.
Yeah, but we're grateful for the loan and the grant from them.
Yeah, great. Excellent. Thanks, Dave. I.
Good to go.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I think it's we're moving along finally, so that's.
We'll be back in a few weeks.
Feel very, you know, we're in your trustworthy hands and.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, likewise. Okay, thanks. Appreciate your time.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
Dave, thank you. Look forward to the seeing you next time. Okay, so moving right along, it is time to again negotiate our laborers' union contract. Um, and you're looking to designate a board member. It was Brian.
The board, it was Brian, Ed prior to Brian.
I I prior to Brian, I did it and Brian did it, so I. I think Greg.
It'd be a great learning experience.
Yeah.
That seems to happen, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, so we're we're looking at meetings right now, the fifth, eleventh, and fourteenth. I can follow up with you later.
Okay.
Greg, about your availability.
Okay.
Typically try to schedule those meetings during the day, right? Yeah, early afternoon, so. I know you do.
I appreciate that.
May have some conflicts.
Workwise, that would be. Like to get started in in the reason, and and actually, the team's representative was saying, you know, later March, and I asked him about. Possibility of starting these meetings earlier only because of the budget process.
Okay, I mean, a lot of things were sort of straightened out in the contract last time, so maybe this time won't be as many.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And Greg, I do. Phil, same thing with those dates. If there's any dates there that you have a problem with, let me know. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Next is the Mass Works uh grant update.
Yeah, this is just an update. So we recently received a reimbursement for 102,107, and that was all for engineering expenditures incurred. In quarter two between October and December. That was submitted with our um last quarterly report. And following that, the submission of that report, there's been some communication with Mass Works, the program manager. They're they're interested. They're aware that we are looking at additional. Yeah, projected costs and, you know, I'm staying in touch with them about that.
Oh, my gosh.
But they they're, the program manager is reviewing it with the financial staff at Mass Works. Um, I gave them a number just recently that the engineer had given us, and Michael will be coming to a future meeting to meet with the select board to go over those projected. Additional costs.
Okay. Well, thanks for that update, Marlene. So that sort of concludes the DPW portion of this. I'm wondering if it makes sense to skip around a little bit because I have to leave. And take care of specifically the Connecticut River Greenway M O U with North Hampton. I'm sure that they're anxious to get that done, so. So this is after a lot of um back and forth and haggling. I had. Some lengthy conversations with North Hampton Planning about, you know, my feelings on this, that I was pretty clear about at previous meetings. In terms of sort of the term of this, I feel like it's written. In a way that I feel more comfortable now about the design process. So I'm assuming you had a chance to take a look at that.
I'm fine with it.
I did. I'm good with it, too.
So the copy you have in your package is the clean copy. I did bring the edited version if you wanted to take a look at it. I just didn't want to paper you down, you know, weigh you down with all kinds of documents, but I do have the edited version here. And really, it was just sort of simplified. But it does address Diana's concerns.
You just need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion to accept the M O U from the Connecticut River Greenway. Jared Hughes passed that. Present it. A second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, that was long and not fun process, but, okay. Anything else, Marlene, you want to make sure we get done?
Before you leave, yes, I would like to discuss the treasure collector's position that is currently advertised and the salary. And as a result of that search, there has not been any response to our. Our ad. I have had some conversations with the interim treasure collector. He strongly encourages the town look at. Increasing that salary range. I also took a look at some other communities that later last year were. Um, in the process of trying to fill a treasure collector position. West Brookfield. Population very similar to Hatfield, however, in 2018, their population was 3,785, so. Little more, and I'm sure their population may increase since 2018. Um, their search for treasure collector, which was full-time, the salary range, and this was. Last year in August that they had posted this position, salary range was 80,000 to 95,000. Um, so we are, we currently are advertising the position at 78,000 plus or minus. My recommendation is to have a salary range of 80,000 to 90,000. Also, Towne Waitley was looking for a treasure collector. I reached out to Waitley, haven't received a response. They didn't publish a salary range. They published an hourly rate, which I thought was significantly low. Um, $29.36 an hour, and that is a full-time position. That's really low. That is. So I I wanted to know if they were successful in filling the position. So. I really feel that the 78,000 is is too low for, you know, what town needs.
I mean, it's not attracting any applicants.
None. And from what I can see, looking at the Massachusetts Collective Treasures Association page, there is a demand for filling treasure.
And so we'd be looking at this, we we, to be. Fair, we probably wouldn't get this person on board until very late in this fiscal year or in the next.
Yeah.
Fiscal year. So the budgeting process, we would have to.
You're right.
You know, this is for really inclusion next year's budget. The the difference, because, I mean, by the time we advertise again and interviews are done and notices are given, I mean, you're.
Well, the advertisement is still out there. I would just update it to reflect.
Right, but you have to give time for people to.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, none of us are surprised to learn that.
People, I would expect someone would be giving even four weeks notice to to their current employer, if not more.
I mean, I don't see really what choice we have.
I mean, the only way to get more applicants is bump it up.
Yeah. I think that would, that's the wise decision to do that.
I mean, it's a very, you know, a position with very specific requirements and.
Yeah.
We want to attract a good candidate.
It's a significant financial officer position for the town.
So, I mean, do we need to vote that?
Yes, please.
So you want to change it to 80 to 90,000 dollar range?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we change the treasure connection. Treasure collector pay range to 80,000 to 90,000 plus benefits.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then do you want, so I still have time to do a few more things. Do you want to do the account? Aye. Thank you. And then do you want, so I still have time to do a few more things. Do you want to do the accounting services?
That is simply an update. Um, I, I, well, I do have some concerns and I will address them at a later time with the select board. Um, Markham recently, as you know, prior to Markham, it was Melanson.
Right.
Um, CPA, um, and then Markham acquired Melanson. They now have merged with Powers and Sullivan. And I included a, uh, article in your packet. Our recent accountant, who actually has been there less than a year, has, has left Markham. Has gone back to working for a municipality. Um, so I, I feel, and, and we see it, it's, it's obvious that the accountant, they don't have enough accountants on staff and they're stretched thin with the number of municipal clients that they have. So I, I have been monitoring, um, the issues. I have met with, with this accountant supervisor. Been in touch with her as recent as early last week, and periodically we'll have reviews because, you know, I just think we need to stay on top of these issues. So, you know, going forward, I'm anticipating that they're going to be sending us a new contract for the next fiscal year, but they need to do something about their services.
I was gonna say, why is there so much upheaval in this realm? Like, we, it's just been.
We, we know that, you know, the accountant, prior to the accountant that just left, you know, it was just some of, some of the issues, I think, that the accountants that Markham hires, is, it's a different, um, work ethic, you know, style, um.
Well, I just wonder, with the qualifications, with the qualifications, you need to be a municipal accountant.
Correct.
You can also just be working in a, you know, not in the municipal arena and making a lot more money.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, it's treated more like a business, and I understand it is a business.
It is, yeah.
But.
So you're just gonna keep us posted on that?
I am. I wanted to just bring you up to date.
And then I see that the FY '23 audit is.
It's late. Um, we've been, actually, the last few years, that audit has been scheduled in the late fall. So it is late, but they will be here the week of March 11th. And it just occurred to me, I had talked about this earlier and said the week of March 8th, so it is the 11th, the 18th. We're waiting on free cash and expect that we should have that soon. That has taken a little longer than usual. The accountant submitted it probably almost four weeks ago, the bound sheet, Schedule A. And I reached out to the Division of Local Services last week to our representative, but I haven't heard back from him.
Hmm, okay. Um, how about the, um, Route 5 Water and Sewer Improvements Project?
Um, just, uh, quickly, so the, the, the engineer, C E I, has had a meeting and is expecting to have another meeting very soon with the contractor to tie down those increased, or those additional costs. And Mike Oll from C E I will be meeting with the select board at our very next meeting. Hopefully. He was going to come March 5th, and I realized, oh, he can't meet. That's the day of the election. Um, but that conversation, we need to have that conversation and, and understand what we're looking at for, for money to get us through this project. So we, we are anticipating the project to resume in April. I'll be here before you know it.
Well, I mean, that's a schedule, and we've got a schedule for completion end of June, so that's, that's what we've been promised.
Fingers crossed.
There's penalties built in if they're not done by June.
Right.
Okay.
There has been some minimal work done at the, uh, the pump station there through the winter, um, but as far as the rest of the work they need to do out on Route 5, that, that ceased in November.
Well, I think, yeah, and that's probably a mast D O T requirement.
It is. It is.
Okay, um, well, it looks like we got through everything on the agenda, but it would be time to look at the, um, budget reviews. So since I have to leave anyway, do we want, maybe want to take a break? And then you can take that up after I go?
Sure.
That'll pay what you ask.
Sure.
Rather than start it and.
Um, just quickly, while you're still here, Diana, um, the Historical Society, they submitted an application to community preservation um, for some barn, proposed repairs for the barn, and then they discovered the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Historical Society. Um, finds that the town is responsible for making those repairs. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that there are, um, you know, significant or, you know, problems with the structure that need to be addressed. So that's something that the Historical Commission hasn't communicated with me about that, although I'm sure they will be very soon, but those may be, um, those repairs should be on the capital plan.
And so why can't they still be funded with CPA? Because that's still town money.
Well, the town would have to submit a, an application, so we can still do that. I'm just, it's sort of late in the season to submit it to.
Well, even their application was late, I believe.
Well, they submitted it timely, but they revised it and resubmitted.
Okay.
So I, I'm going to have a conversation with John Wilk to see if something, if, if, you know, I can put together an application and submit it, because you don't want to let those, um, holes in the barn.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that barn has a lot of potential. They could do a lot of different things with that barn. They could even put a second level on there. There's, there's all kind of options and it needs to be taken care of, so, especially the roof. The roof we patched a couple of years ago.
It's slate, right?
No, it's.
Oh, I didn't think it was slate. Oh, it's not? Oh, I don't know. I didn't think it was, but.
A lot of barns today, the roofs are going with copper or metal.
Metal.
Metal roofing to protect it.
So there are holes in the foundation, holes in the sides.
They get all the rodents coming in and animals, and that's not good.
So we need to button those up.
So, I mean, do you need a motion for us to submit that based on there, or, or we just submit it?
Um, why don't I just go, if you'd like to actually, go ahead and vote to submit an application, then I will work on that and get it off to them. Otherwise, I would, I'm just thinking I'd be coming to you with that application to vote.
Delay it even more.
Right, so if you, you could vote that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, this, I think this is important to protect that barn and take care of everything. And, and this will be CPC funding anyways.
Right.
Which is taxpayers' money matched with the state.
Yes.
And what, what people should understand is it's, when you can use CPC money, it's money that people already paid, and then the state matches it, so you don't have to ask the taxpayers to dip into their pockets a second time, so. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, to push or approve the application for their revised amendment proposal for the Hatfield Historical Society. That's presented to us in our packet.
A second.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's fantastic. Great, thank you. Okay, so you ready to break for a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay, John.
Have to locate the budgets in the book.
Okay, we're back. Unfortunately, Diane, I had to go to another commitment, but we're going to continue with topic number four, which is reviews with departments over at Budgets. So we're going to start. Marlene, you want to start with the accountant or HCTV?
I'll start with, yeah, for it's, yeah, I guess we all have to, well, I just, I'm going to, it's going to take me a minute because I put them in alphabetical order, so I assume they all were. But anyway, I have the cable TV enterprise budget right here in front of me, and you will see that this proposed budget is an increase. However, that increase of 103,500 is for capital, and that's for a capital project for, to relocate the studio upstairs. So otherwise, expenses are normal, route, you know, just general expenditures are about the same. There is a little bit of an increase, oops, I'm on the wrong one.
And I do want people to know that the increase is related to the upstairs, which is part of--
It's the $103,500 more.
Money that's available for--
Right.
--doing that within the cable TV enterprise fund.
That comes out of the enterprise fund.
So the money is there, it's not asking it to taxpayers for more money.
Yes.
If we move ahead with that, if the taxpayers want to, then we could have that upstairs as a conference center. I talked to John earlier, he says that right now he's got some guesstimates, and he's in the middle of putting everything together, putting the plan together, and hopefully we'll have that within the next month or so. Okay.
Okay.
And next--
Any questions about that budget?
No, I understand that.
Okay. Next is animal control, animal inspector and animal control officer. The animal control officer, there is an increase for training and licensing on the expense side, and this is a result of Massachusetts Department of Agricultural and Health Services, and there is mandatory licensing requirements now, so I have increased the expenses to account for that. The animal inspector's budget, there is no change. However, I do--
There's a recommended increase in stipend.
It's not an increase, that what you see there for 25 is not an increase, but I am recommending that we increase it by 10% to 3,500, from, currently, the position stipend is $3,246. I'm requesting an increase to $3,571, but that will have to be determined by the select board if you agree to increase that. And the same with the animal inspector, I'm requesting a 10% increase there as well, but the requested amount is not an increase. That's, that's the current stipend.
Doesn't seem reasonable to me, yes.
Okay. All right, next is conservation commission. There is, there is, it's level services, there's no change there. So the total budget is $1,846.
Okay.
Next, budget is the accountant, and-- Just put my hands on that one. There is an increase there, although we have not received a proposal for the next fiscal year from, from Markham based on current expenses for services. The accountant submitted a request for $102,000 for accounting support services. So that's an increase of 11%. The requested budget is 117,100. Any questions?
No, I mean, as far as Markham with the accountant, I think next discussion is trying to make sure we start hitting our target dates on stuff because--
The change in staff is not helping.
They didn't hit target dates this year, and, and that's sort of upsetting because we spent a lot of time trying to get to the point where we can hit those target dates.
Yeah.
So you can--
I do have concerns about the financial--
Express our displeasure, or mine anyways.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
The next one is the audit. That, there's no change there. We've level funded that, that budget. When I was speaking with the auditor last week, he had indicated that this would be his last year with Hatfield, so I don't, not really sure why, didn't get a chance to talk to him, but I will further about that, but I'm just, so we may be looking at hiring a new auditor for FY '24 audit. Next one is a big, fairly large budget, and that is the general liability and property increases in this current fiscal year, although we haven't, we're seeing the increases, but we haven't been invoiced, and the account, insurance company is just trying to decide whether they are going to invoice municipalities in this current fiscal year or the next fiscal year, and it is a result of assessed values. Property valuations increased, so they send out a representative to do an assessment of all municipal buildings. When I saw those valuations significantly higher than what the town has them assessed at, and I don't understand that. Had a conversation with our representative several months ago, they use a whole different formula, and I don't know how they can do that. So to our surprise, as with many other municipalities, we're looking at an additional premium of $13,405 as a result of those property valuations. And again, insurance company, MYA, has not decided if they're going to invoice municipalities in the current fiscal year. I can tell you that where we saw the increase in values was the wastewater treatment plant. Current value is, is a mil, that looks like a thousand, a thousand, yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's $1,66,971. The updated value is $6,957,000. So that's a difference of 58, $5,890,00, yeah, $90,000. These are huge.
Wow.
The EMS building, current value's $422,628, updated value's $729,000. The water filtration plant, current value's $564,867,000, updated value is $5,295,000. The library, current value is, these decimal points, hard to tell if it's a comma or a decimal point, that looks like $1,049,027. Updated value is $1,358,000. So I was quite upset when I met with our insurance representative over these values, and he had said that the problem is that they waited much too long to do an assessment of the buildings. So the town is going to be on the hook for that additional premium, just don't know if it'll be in this fiscal year or next fiscal year.
Wow.
The other increase we saw this year was the workers' comp. So we get an estimated premium on July 1, and then the payroll is audited, and we had an additional cost of $8,000. That was huge. So I've, I'm asking for that in FY '25. So you're seeing an increase there of the current operating budget's $193,428, looking for an increase to $203,099. So that, that is, those, those are fixed costs.
Right.
We can't do anything about that.
Right.
We can't shop around.
Well, I am actually.
Yeah, oh.
I, I've, yeah, consulting, working with another insurance group to see if, you know, we have to provide them with all the same information that's available to our current carrier so that they can, you know, it's equal.
Okay.
But, you know, can they provide us services, you know, that the cost is less? I don't know.
I understand, there's only a couple, insurance and the whole state of Massachusetts.
And I have to also say that, you know, in all fairness to MYA, they have an excellent employee program, and the webinars and workshops, training exercises that they have available to municipalities, to employees, and you earn credits. So when I say credits, that, those credits are equivalent to saving money. So you can, you know, get a credit and apply it to your, your, you can either ask for a check, and it goes to the general fund, or in some cases, we've asked for it to be, to reduce our next invoice, only because we have fallen short the last fiscal years in funding insurance costs.
Okay.
But if we are, if we are, you know, funding the account the way it should be, any credits earned, that would just go to the general fund, which would be helpful. If there's, if there aren't any questions, we'll move on to legal.
Sure.
All right. So legal, I think there's just an increase of $2,000. That is a, yes, $2,000, and that is a result of legal services and a rate increase. Last couple of years, though, we have been able to turn back money. I mean, we just, it all depends on, you know--
What happens.
Exactly. You know, departments are very good about, you know, following up with me and seeking advice from town council, and--
I know the five and 10 project took some of his time because of the issues out there with a couple of the owners and--
Yeah, some towns, yeah.
That was--
Some, yeah, it took some time. But overall, services with Attorney Mullen are very good.
Yep.
The next budget is the select board. I added $1,000 to the expense for professional development. And, and the reason for that is, you know, Mr. Gagnon is a new member of the board, if he is interested in, you know, attending any conferences or meetings. But it's, I think it's helpful to have that there for any member of the board who wishes to attend seminars or meetings for elected officials. Otherwise, there isn't any, and I said that increase was added for professional development, actually, it's professional services, if you wanted to hire an outside vendor. The professional development, that was added a few years ago. Yeah, so that's a $14,441 requested budget. All right, next administrator, town administrator and staff budget, and-- So there are increases, increases being recommended. Actually, there is a, an increase that is a one-time, and that's per the town administrator's contract. Since I will be retiring at the end of the year, there is a 25%, 25% value of estimated accrued unused sick time that is paid out, and so that is a one-time payment, and that will go away. I am requesting, although the budget numbers do not represent what my recommended request to increase the administrative salaries, they don't typically, they usually receive the cost of living adjustment. However, I do feel that performance or merit, stunt merit increase is deserving of the staff. We have an excellent administrative staff. And I feel that they, they should be rewarded, and in a time when it's difficult to, to maintain, you know, or keep your staff, I wouldn't want to be doing anything differently.
We've also discussed the possible step increases, like the school does too.
Mm-hmm.
And there was always a thing about, well, do you have stepids, or do you have a step increase for each year?
Yeah.
Based on, you know, if you do a good job.
So I understand that many years ago, the town engaged a consulting company when they evaluated all the job descriptions, and they put together a pay scale grade, and it wasn't something that the town could afford. So it was a shame, because there was one, you know, that was developed, but it's not used.
Well, it is used at the schools.
Now, I'm talking about town employees--
Right.
For the town.
But I mean, the school has implemented that over the years, step increases.
Right, they follow.
And their, their employees are far more than--
Yeah.
--administrative staff down here.
Yeah, they follow a grade system there.
So, I mean, maybe we should be looking at--
And they're in the, yeah, the teachers and the paraprofessionals are in a union.
Maybe that's something we should be discussing again. I mean, why should one group have it and the other group doesn't? Just food for thought.
Okay. The current salary for '25 for the town administrator is the current, yeah, the requested '25 salary is based on the current, current year's salary. But I just wanted to mention that that could be subject to a contractual increase, if the board was willing to consider that.
Right.
And the other thing to, to keep in mind is, and I've had the discussion with the select board, that when replacing, replacing me, you may have to look at increasing that salary. It's just a possibility.
Again, we go out to, we, we get a thing out there, and then we get in people applying, fine. If we don't get people applying, and then we have to do, look at increasing, that's all.
Yeah. I, I was comfortable in reducing the advertising and legal notices. I don't have a note about that, so it's embarrassing to say, because the cost of legal notices, oh, I know why, because the cost of publishing legal notices has increased considerably, but I've been charging that to our legal budget. So, was able to reduce that a little bit. The only other category here under the town administrator's budget is the cost of hiring a professional firm, just food for thought if you want to consider it. I would obviously have to add a number in there, but if you're considering outsourcing the search for the town administrator, there would be a cost to doing that. I don't know that that's been determined, whether, you know, you'd like to do that or just appoint a committee, a search committee.
Well, I think right now, I think the game plan is just looking at all the budgets and seeing where the numbers are and seeing if, whether we have to stay within, or whether we're within what we have to spend, or whether we have to possibly make a percentage cut.
Yeah.
Know what I'm saying? I mean--
Yes.
So, just letting everybody know at home, these, these budgets aren't in stone yet until-- So, just letting everybody know at home, these budgets aren't in stone yet until we do finalization-
Yes.
...with the finance committee and everything else. We're just getting all the budgets in, people are putting in their requests, and then we'll look at everything and then make a determination afterwards.
Yeah. So overall, the increase is really on the wages side. Expenses slightly under, so that's down from $11,679 for expenses in the current fiscal year to $10,580. On the wages side, there's an increase of 100, from $190,965 to $202,48. That really represents that one-time payout. But if the Select Board is in agreement to propose a merit increase for administrative staff, then there would be an increase there. Are there any questions?
No, well explained.
Now, so far, it's everything's pretty much self-explanatory.
Okay, next budget is technology. Increases in support services and replacing equipment. Suzer has provided a cost proposal for support services, which was, I think we were running around 28, 29,000. They're looking at a cost of $35,000.
Well, under technology, one of my pet peeves for over the years is trying to save on paper. I mean, if we had iPads, we would probably save tons and tons of paper. Actually, there's two things.
And we've had discussions about that.
And I know, I bring it up every year-
Mm-hmm.
-because all this paper, and then, and if you have an iPad, you have a electronic file it can go to.
Yeah.
It just probably, whether it's each month or file system of some sort, but that's always been my pet peeve.
So I just would be scanning all the documents and then uploading them to the iPads. So, yeah, Ed and I were talking last week, and I'd like to get a quote from Suzer.
And we get some kind of idea of what it would cost.
Yeah.
And actually, we get some kind of idea of what we're paying for paper, copying machine, and maintenance of the copier, and et cetera, et cetera.
It's just a lot of waste.
Right. There's a ton of waste. And I've been bringing that up each year since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
And under technology, other thing is electronic timekeeping. I hope we can move to electronic timekeeping because right now, the way I understand it, everybody prints out their sheets, and then somebody in the town hall has to re-enter the information a second time, which takes a couple days. So with electronic timekeeping, it would all be done. We would save two days a week on doing electronic timekeeping that way. But, I mean, I know UMass had electronic timekeeping 40 years ago, so, or 30.
Whoa.
But, I mean, if there's some way, I know we've had a, trying to look for a new, new treasurer in the office, and, but I, my understanding is the software is in place, it just hasn't been set up. Is that correct?
The software is in place.
Just some glitching.
My understanding, it would require, you know, some training for departments or whoever's going to be processing each department's payroll.
Under technology, I mean, that's-
But everything is there. You know, for quite some time, it was just getting that, the treasurer's office up to speed and running on processing the payroll in a new program. But now, yes, I just don't see any reason why we can't have all departments submitted.
I mean, since when I first got on the board, the second month, that was my first observation.
Yeah.
And the other thing is the iPad. I mean, there's a lot of paper. There's just too much paper-
Yeah.
-being wasted. So anyways, under technology, I just wanted to bring up those thoughts. I don't know how you feel about it, Greg.
Oh, I think we're way behind on that, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree. Definitely. The other increase is on software licensing, and there's a need to increase that by a few hundred dollars. And, you know, just going back to the support services, that is about a $10,000 increase. But I'd like to also mention that that reflects an increase in the support services for the town's website. We did see an increase in that. And then the replacement of equipment. We're estimating about $7,600 for replacing equipment in the next fiscal year.
Well, we've made a commitment over the years to keep up the technology, so-
We do.
It's not a bad thing.
We track that inventory list and try to stay on schedule.
Yeah, we've been doing pretty good, everything staying up with that, so.
Next operating budget is town hall operations. That consists of the copier lease, and the current copier lease expires this year. So we looked at a three-year lease versus a five-year lease, and it is cheaper to go with a five-year lease, however, that requires town meeting approval. By statute, the town cannot enter into a lease agreement that is greater than three years. So it's in our best interest to lease the copier for five years. So that's, you know, and actually, there will be a little bit of savings by doing the five years. So you can see that we've reduced the copier, oh, and this also includes the postage meter that is leased. So the current operating budget for the copier and the postage lease is $10,622. It's been reduced to $8,500. We've increased postage because of the postage stamp increase, and we've had to bump up administrative and office supplies. So while the paper is purchased out of this budget, there's been an increase in the cost of paper, speaking of paper, Ed.
Yeah, there you go. There's the paper, guys.
That's a lot of paper.
Yeah. So overall, that budget request is a reduction. Current year is $17,005. The request is $15,412. And lastly, the veterans' services budget. That is level services. However, I am recommending that the Select Board support an increase in the stipend. The number requested for FY '25 is the current year's stipend, which is $6,329. Select Board did increase that for this current fiscal year. However, we're having a difficult time filling that position, and I'm not sure if it's because it's, you know, it's maybe eight to 10 hours a week, but, you know, the reporting to the state and just making themselves available to assist veterans who are either, you know, looking into benefits. And I've also increased the cost, you know, for attending trainings because I feel that with any, anybody you're putting in that position needs to have that opportunity to attend meetings and trainings.
Right. I mean, so far in the past, we've been able to get Northampton assisting training if we find somebody. I mean-
Yeah.
I'm hoping somebody from the community would step forward.
Yeah.
But it has to be a veteran in town that is, that wants the job. And then I guess if we get a person forward, maybe we could negotiate the higher stipend-
Right.
-with that individual at that time. Until, not, but for now, we're locked in with Northampton because these services are required.
Yeah, so we're locked into a contract with Northampton through June 30. The veterans' position is still, remains posted, and-
But I think for next year, we should lock in the Northampton cost for the year in case, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
It gives us leeway, it gives us two ways to go. If we can't find anybody, at least that is covered. And if we do find somebody, maybe we could save a few dollars that can go into free cash afterwards, but-
Yeah.
That's just, that's just my thought. I don't know how Greg feels about that.
I think that's great, yeah, because we're not guaranteed to find anybody.
That's right, we're not.
We kind of have to plan for the bigger one.
Right, lock in a Northampton's cost for the year, and we're covered both sides. If we get somebody, we might save some, a couple dollars.
Yeah. And Northampton, you know, I'm very grateful for them helping us out and the staff over there, they're great to work with.
Because right now, we're working with, what, eight, was it eight people?
We have, currently, the town has eight veterans that receive benefits.
And the town receives some of the money back from the state, which is, is it 75%?
You know, I didn't check on that, Ed, and I did, I was just reading something about that, but I wanted to check in the percentage. Yeah, so we get money on the cherry sheet.
Right.
It's a VSO exemption is what it's referred to, and it's, I don't know, somewhere between $1,100, $1,200.
Tony, we do talk to Veterans Services in Northampton, can you? I thought Jerry said that we, the state will pay us for flags, American flags.
Oh, I saw your email about that, yeah.
Because I know the, right now, the elementary school, no, I mean, the Smith Academy needs a flag, the town hall needs a flag, both of the flags at Smith Academy and town hall are pretty worn. And then there's also the flags that, for the polls for Memorial Day services, and then there's, sometimes they get the little handheld flags that they-
Yeah.
-give out to the kids, so.
Yeah. We increased the Memorial Day budget a few years ago-
Right.
-to purchase more flags for the polls. Jerry had encouraged us to do that, and so we did. Yeah.
Okay, so that sort of covers topic four, and I think that covers everything for today. Are we missing anything?
I believe we have covered everything.
Okay. Do you have any other business that you need to bring up?
I do not.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Oh, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, John.